Good morning. I'd like to call to order the Public Planning Committee meeting of August 27, 2020. Teresa, are we in compliance with FOIA?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we are.
I'd like to have a roll call. Committee members, please unmute yourself to reply after Teresa calls your name for the roll. Teresa, please call the roll.
Ms. Becker?
Here.
Mr. Stanford?
Here.
Mr. Ames?
Here. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And if you, Glenn or Tammy, have any changes to the agenda, please state them to Teresa. Teresa, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ms. Becker?
I'm here. And the only thing, I don't know if it needs to be added to the agenda, David, but there's an idea, project, something beneficial to the town residents that I wanted to at least introduce.
I will include that in committee business.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Are you in favor of the agenda?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Stanford?
Yes, I'm in favor of the agenda and I have no additions.
Thank you. And Mr. Ames?
Yes, I'm in favor. Thank you very much, Teresa. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 27, 2020, which seems like a lifetime ago?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. If you have any changes to the minutes when you vote, please advise Teresa of them. Teresa, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes. Teresa, do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir. Public comments concerning business items were to be submitted electronically through the town's Open Town Hall portal. The portal closed at noon yesterday, and all of those comments were provided to the committee for review and made a part of the official record. Citizens were also provided the option to comment on business items during the meeting by phone, and we have one caller to comment on the Sea Turtle Protection Ordinance revisions. During that item, Mr. Chairman, you may call on that citizen to address the committee for three minutes.
Thank you, Teresa. We'll get into unfinished business, and I'd like to welcome the public who are listening. I hope you are well and enjoying our summer as much as possible. The first item on the agenda is the review and recommendation of workforce housing LMO amendments. Jamie Lefkow, can you please make a presentation for our benefit?
Yes, sir. Good morning, committee members. I'm joining you remotely today. We are here to look at our workforce housing land management ordinance amendments and hopefully get our recommendation to pass these forward to town council. Do we have the slides to put up, Jennifer? Oops. Okay, if we can go ahead and go to the next slide. The Public Planning Committee and town council have been involved with this for years. We identified it as a priority several years back, and as part of that, we had some frameworks we used to hire consultants. So we hired Lisa Sturtevant and Associates in August 2018 to draft our workforce housing strategic plan, which was adopted by council in November 2019. Staff and the Public Planning Committee used that document to set our framework and our foundations and criteria to create the workforce housing program. And as part of that, staff met with the Public Planning Committee in January of 2020 to help set areas for us to target this program. And when we went through that, we identified three areas to target for the workforce housing initiatives, and that was our Palmetto Bay, Arrow Road, Pope Avenue corridor, our Squire Pope, Gumtree Road area, and our Opportunity Zone and the Main Street area. And so we used that to help draft the amendments, and the intent of this is to provide incentives to promote the development of workforce housing. And since you saw some of the amendments in January, there has been some changes. When we originally brought it to you, we proposed it as an overlay district. When we looked into that, we felt like it was going to be better served to actually create workforce housing as a new residential use within the land management ordinance, and we would permit that subject to conditions in certain zoning districts. So we used the priority areas that were identified to look at what zoning districts to target for this new use. And then we created conditions to limit the areas of the island to the priority areas for this use. The areas are similar, and again, we identified the areas due to proximity to transportation and employment centers. And when you look at it, there is approximately 1,800 acres where workforce housing could be permitted. And if we go to the next slide, I'll show you a map. This map was sent out to a lot of the properties in the area to show them where workforce housing could be permitted. Now, this is not a map that's going to be adopted. It's just something that was a guide to give people an idea of where they could be. So the purple properties were the initial areas that we identified using the zoning districts and also the conditions to say, okay, these properties, regardless of what's developed there right now, could possibly be used as workforce housing. I want to point out the area that's in pink, and that is part of our Main Street district. When this went forward to the Land Management Ordinance Committee, there was a question as to why the parcels on the south side of 278 there next to Walmart were not included. So staff went back and looked at the possibility of including those. They weren't originally in the priority areas, and so that's why they were excluded. But when we looked at it, there wasn't any negative impact to possibly including them, so we did go ahead and add those properties to the list to be included as a possibility of being used for workforce housing. So all of the areas in purple plus the ones in pink would be areas where workforce housing could be permitted.
Jamie, let me interrupt for just a moment.
Yes, sir.
Would you like questions as we go through your presentation or wait until the end?
Let's wait until the end. I only have a couple more slides. It's a pretty short presentation.
Okay.
All right, so if we go to the next slide. Wanted to point out a couple of other things that changed since you saw things in January. There were some things moved around and some minor changes, but the bigger things that came from the Land Management Ordinance Committee is we originally had proposed a 90-year, 99-year affordability period on our rental units. And there was a question as to, is that too long? So we went back and looked and found that most places that have a 99-year affordability are when the town owns the unit or a nonprofit owns and controls the units. So since there's not an intent of that at this point, we did go ahead and lessen the rental unit affordability period to 30 years. There's also a question of penalties for noncompliance. What happens if people are not complying with the regulations? And so we clarified that there is a twofold part of that. If you don't comply with the land management ordinance, there's always code enforcement action. But we also have a requirement of covenants on the property, so there is injunctive legal relief for the town should we need to enforce the covenants. There was a question about homeowner's association dues. Those can be an additional impact on the cost of housing, and there was a concern that that could then trigger the unit to no longer be affordable to certain families. So we did add a provision that limits a charge of 75% of the dues. If you charge a certain rate to the market rate units, then 75% of that is a max that you could charge for an affordable unit. And then again, we did modify the Main Street district to include the properties on the south side of 278. So those are the major changes that you will see, other than the change from the overlay district to the zoning districts. Next slide. I wanted to go over with you the public input efforts that we've had and the questions that have come up, just briefly to let you know what we've done. We did a pretty extensive communication effort with this. We were not required to send out notices because it's just changes to the land management ordinance, but we did, the purple properties that were identified on that map, as well as any property within 350 feet of those properties, were all sent a letter. A letter telling about the public hearing, that we're changing the land management ordinance regarding workforce housing. They got a copy of the map, as well as some frequently asked questions as to try to explain what we're doing. And there were 4,300 letters that were sent out, in addition to a legal ad and multiple opportunities to submit comments on the Open Town Hall. And this effort actually created quite a lot of comments. I received many, many phone calls and emails, most of which were clarification, lack of understanding, how does this impact me? And so once it was explained that we're not rezoning properties, we're not forcing anyone to develop workforce housing, there's no current projects planned at this point, we're not changing anybody's condos over to workforce housing. Most people were okay with the program, and the need for workforce housing was definitely something they supported. There was just a lot of concern as of how it would impact their properties. The only thing I did want to clarify again, and it seems to be something that come up more later, is we're adding additional density. Additional density comes with the workforce housing as an incentive. So how does the additional development impact the infrastructure, the natural resources? And so what I wanted to make people understand is to, people can develop their properties with any use that's on, allowed in the base zoning district. That can include workforce housing or any other use, but they still have to comply with all of the regulations in the land management ordinance, whatever the use they're developing, as well as the base zoning district. The workforce housing program only gives them additional density. So the height restrictions still remain the same. They still have the buffers and setbacks. They still have to comply with those parts of the development process. So the natural resources will be protected under Chapter 6 of the LMO. They will still have to provide whatever infrastructure is needed to develop that property, regardless of whether it's workforce housing or another use. And the last thing is there was a lot of question about people who are in an existing subdivision or in an existing condominium development. And so one of the things that is specifically listed in there is if you are currently in a legally platted and developed single, major, single-family subdivision. Now, a major single-family subdivision is six lots or more. So our major subdivisions, your Caroline Isles, your Chinavarias, the large subdivisions, those are not eligible to participate in the program, as well as our multifamily condominiums, your Brighton Bays, your Caddila Courts, things like that. You can't take one unit from within a building and go participate in the workforce housing program. You're just not eligible to do that. And the last part of that is workforce housing is permitted in our planned unit developments, our PD-1 districts, but it can only be permitted through a zoning map amendment. You have to amend the master plan to allow that use. But again, single-family lots within those legally plotted subdivisions, major subdivisions, would not be eligible. Same goes for individual multifamily units would not be eligible as well. And so we go to the last slide. This is the schedule we've had. We've been to the LMO committee twice. We've gone to the planning commission. Both have passed forward a recommendation of approval to town council. And then if we get the motion to move forward today, we will have a brief at town council on September 15th, first reading on October 6th, and adoption on the 20th. And so that concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Jamie. And Jamie, I greatly appreciate your work on this. I know it's been a labor of love, and you've done a great job. Ms. Becker, do you have a comment?
I do. So a couple of things, and I'll just pick up on the last one that you were discussing with regard to viable properties and whether or not they were a major subdivision, a legally platted, major subdivision that's currently developed. First, I just want to clarify, is a major subdivision six or more or five or more?
It is six or more.
It is six or more. Okay. Well, I've had this discussion, and I'm going to stick with my thoughts on it. What that does, in my mind, is leave vulnerable to development, property, resident longstanding or short standing, but residential properties that are in more of an enclave of smaller subdivisions. And so I wouldn't have a problem with this without the major subdivision as a criteria, but that anything, any legally plotted subdivision as being exempt from workforce housing, there are going to be too many properties that are vulnerable to development near them or within them that, and that's just unacceptable to me. So everyone should be on the same playing field. So if we take out major and just make it legally plotted subdivisions that have been developed, then I'm okay with it. So that's one concern that I wanted to see if we can get changed here before it moves further. Secondly, there's a provision, and correct me if it's changed, but there's a provision that workforce housing can include manufactured homes. And I think that a number of things on it, but one of the most important, I guess, had to do with some of what you were speaking to before, manufactured homes. I'm looking at the concern with the depreciation of the services that are available in the area with regard to sewers, water, environmental concerns, impact to property values. I think that on our island, over the years, I think there's been a thought that we are looking for some other type of housing than manufactured mobile homes. And don't get me wrong, and I'll say this as a personal comment, and I've shared it with other people, on our property, over the last several hundred years in Texas, my grandparents, for instance, has lived in a mobile home on our property. And that was their choice, and I have no issue with living in a mobile home. That's not my concern. My concern is, as you see these mapped areas, there is potential for additional mobile homes not to be sitting on 1,200 acres, but they're sitting relatively close to other neighborhoods that don't include the style of home that a mobile home or manufactured home might be, and along the roadways. And so I just, I am opposed to any additional mobile home, manufactured homes being inserted, especially as an option for workforce housing in this program. So that's another particular objection that I have with regard to this program. Secondly, third, I guess, in terms of penalties and covenants, and that, I'm confused on this because the discussion from the beginning, as I heard it and as I remember it, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the developer, someone who comes in and takes advantage of this program and develops workforce housing within their complex, if it's not an owner occupied, which has its own covenants that they have to abide by in terms of resale, but if it's a rental unit, it was my understanding it was that manager, that management team owner, who, when it came time to renew their business license every year, would have to provide an affidavit which certified that they checked status in terms of work and income and those types of things. And so what I'm hearing more now, though, is that the town is involved in that. And I very strongly oppose the town being involved in this. At this stage of the game, I think the management team of the buildings are on the ground, and they know what's happening on their properties, and I think the, and they're the ones taking advantage of the opportunity for higher density, et cetera. And so the onus really ought to be on them, and they should be, as has been talked about, as I recall from the beginning, the ones who present with their business renewal affidavit saying that their units are in compliance. So I'm not sure what changed, but I'm not comfortable with that change. So that, as well as the added, a couple of things with regard to the map, the map's not being adopted. So that lends itself to what has happened in the last couple of weeks through other committees, that we have an addition to another area for workforce housing, in this case, south of 278 there, and in the Main Street. So, and I'm not, and that's not something that when we went through the maps and everybody came and they put their dots where they thought workforce housing should be, should be considered, should be incentivized, that by adding places such as the south of 278 in this way is really beneficial overall to the program and to moving forward. So I'm concerned about the fact that we don't have a map that we've agreed to, that could possibly later in the future be amended, but that is a concern of mine. The other thing is, just because I hear about it, and there seems to be a wording issue. People have asked with concern, is my property being rezoned? And the answer is no, your property's not being rezoned. I guess technically, it's not being rezoned, that just another use is being added. And I think when you, I think it's a fine line, right? You're adding another use that wasn't part of the zone of the neighborhood, the area that you moved into, and so maybe it's not technical, but it feels like rezoning to me. So I did want to congratulate the town on the communication effort on this, on this project. I think that it was absolutely the right decision to make, whether it was required or not, to inform everyone in areas that might be affected by this, so that they could have their questions answered and make the statements and decisions they wanted to make. So that is a big step forward in the way things are done. That's what I have now, but there are those concerns that I have that will keep me from voting yes.
Jamie, can you respond to any of those items? Why was minor subdivision included, manufactured homes, the issue of the affidavit and responsibility, and why is the map not being adopted?
Yes, sir. For subdivisions, we went with major platted subdivisions because those are something that's easily tracked. When it comes to anything of a minor subdivision, that would basically eliminate most of the rest of the island. At some point in time, almost every property has been subdivided, and so that would then eliminate their eligibility from the program. So that's why we went with the major subdivisions, because that left lands that where we have subdivided one lot into two, it could still be eligible to participate in the program.
Okay.
So that was the intent. Manufactured homes, when it comes to residential use, the only type of way that the town regulates it is single-family versus multifamily, group living, workforce housing. We don't delineate between a townhouse, a condo, a home, a manufactured home. But what I can tell you with manufactured homes is they would not be able to participate in the owner-occupied portion of it because manufactured homes are considered personal property. There would be no mortgage associated with it, so therefore they could not comply with the program. Now, if they wanted to do the rental portion of it, they could do that, but they would have to comply with the restrictions of the program. They would have to have the covenants and the agreements in place to do that. When it comes to eligibility, the town is not tracking income or jobs when it comes to people who are eligible for the program. If it's owner-occupied, yes, the owner is going to submit an affidavit to the town that says, here's my income, here's my eligibility, it's signed off on, and that's it. I mean, we're not going to go verify that they work where they work, or we're not going to verify their employment. They're signing the affidavit stating that to us. And it's same with the rental units, whether it's the landlord, the management, or the owner of the units, they would be responsible to submitting that affidavit to the town. The town is not going to be tracking that eligibility. All we're doing is verifying that the number they put on there meets the requirements, which is the 60 to 80% of the area median income for rental units, and 80 to 100% of the area median income for owner-occupied units. As long as they meet that criteria, we're not going to have a problem with the eligibility.
And so when is that information expected to be delivered to the town?
If it's owner-occupied, it has to be done prior to purchase. If it's rental-occupied, it's done at renewal of their lease.
Okay, so on renewal of a lease, is the town, is the town getting a compiled copy from the management team? Or is it getting a bunch of individual affidavits?
We haven't wiped out all of the details, but I would envision it being individual notarized affidavits for each unit. But we could look at possibly doing something else if, I mean, it could be, if I have had 10 units, they could give us one affidavit notarized that shows all 10 of the units on there. It is possible.
I'm sympathetic to what Ms. Becker is saying. I was under the impression that we were going to rely on management agents to do the homework and submit a single affidavit saying that those renting properties from that management agent were in compliance. So that is an issue that I think we need to clarify. And then the question I have, would the Buford Housing Authority have any role to play in managing this program for the town of Hilton Head Island?
Not at this point. I think the hope would be moving forward, whether it's with the regional housing trust, that we could possibly look at having an outside agency assist us with this process.
I also understand Ms. Becker's comment about manufactured housing, placement on roads and so on, but I also understand that there is an opportunity for native islanders to monetize their property through land leases. And so I'm trying to balance those two considerations and wonder whether or not, in order to provide the opportunity today, but with an expectation that at some future date, that mobile home would be replaced by a permanent structure. So I'm just throwing out the idea of a sunset clause in there somewhere. I don't know if that would work. Anything else for Ms. Becker's questions?
The map. Since we are not adopting a new zoning district or an overlay district, there's no map that will be adopted as part of this. The map was only created to kind of give people an idea of where workforce housing could be permitted, but based on the conditions that are in the LMO, and those are also, the LMO is a living document, those conditions can change. And like with the Main Street, if the Public Planning Committee And like with the Main Street, if the Public Planning Committee believes that the parcels that we added on the south side of Main Street are not beneficial and should not be included, absolutely, we can take that recommendation forward to council and that's something that we can change. Same thing with if we feel like there's areas that shouldn't be included or should be included, the conditional use, conditions that we have in there give us the flexibility to add or take away parcels of eligibility. That's also the reason why we don't have a map, because it is going to be such a fluid thing and is a parcel by parcel basis, people are going to have to come into us and talk to us. Can I put workforce housing here? Is it an option? What kind of density could I put on there? And it's all going to depend on whether it's a vacant piece of property or whether there's something there as to whether they're going to be able to participate and how much they'd be able to participate.
Is, is that a staff decision at that point? Or does the ordinance restrict a staff interpretation?
No, I mean, as long as they meet the conditions in the land management ordinance, it would be a staff decision. The only time it wouldn't be a staff decision is if it's in a PUD. They'd have to apply for a zoning map amendment.
Okay. All right, Mr. Stanford?
Thank you. First, Jamie, thank you for all of your hard work and effort together with your colleagues on the staff. This has been a huge undertaking and I sincerely appreciate the efforts. Then I would say that it's taken us a long, long, long time to get where we are. And while I don't see this as a perfect ordinance, I think it is time for us to push it forward to the council. On the comment, on Tammy's question about covenants and restrictions, I don't see those as a replacement for the affidavit and proof, but rather I see those as a tool. In the event there was a violation of the ordinance, it would be a good, strong legal tool to use against that property owner to enforce the restrictions that are there. Then I would say, Jamie, has this program been tested with any developers in the community?
Not at this point.
I, I think it's important for us to possibly at another public planning committee meeting, possibly in some other format, to bring in some developers to see what the reaction is. Because we want this to be something that is doable, if you will. That's not a very good word, but we want something that is practical and that developers can actually implement. I was confused about the map. It seems to me that the map was a useful beginning effort at identifying potential sites. But it, some of the sites there, to me, are clearly impractical for this. And the result of that is sending out 4,300 letters has created a lot of consternation from nearby property owners about, is their property being rezoned? I've heard from people about that. And are they going to be building workforce housing in my neighborhood? So we needed a map as a tool for us to see where potential sites were. But publicizing it broader the way we've done has created some problems for some neighborhoods. And so I intend to report back to those that have contacted me that, no, we haven't identified any particular property, including the properties near you, as a site for workforce housing. So I regret that that has caused such consternation in the various neighborhoods. I'm frankly confused about the major subdivision versus the minor subdivision in terms of the reasoning behind that. Could you go through that again for us one time?
Sure. Major subdivisions are lots of, of six lots or more. And there are more restrictions and regulations in the land management ordinance that they have to comply with. The minor subdivisions can be anywhere from one lot going to two or going all the way up to five. And basically, almost any piece of property on the, on the island has been subdivided at one point or another. There is a plaque that identifies one lot going from two or up to five. So if we eliminated legally plotted minor subdivisions, that would eliminate a good rating in the program.
So we are excluding the major subdivisions from eligibility for this program?
Yes, sir.
It seems to me that's excluding a lot of potential property that could be eligible for the program, particularly given the fact that we have stated one of our goals is to blend workforce housing into existing developments rather than building projects, if you will. As, as many times this type of housing is created, you build a big building and you pack a bunch of people in there. We're not trying to do that. We're trying to scatter this around the broader community. And while I understand that a community has its, its deep restrictions, if in fact they want to do this, I don't understand why they should be excluded. And then if someone has a parcel that can be divided into six or more units, but it's an undeveloped parcel at the time, they can't use it for workforce housing. I just, I know you've got good reasons for it, I just don't quite understand them.
If it's a vacant piece of property, they can, they can develop it for more. And if they want to put 10 on there, they can. It's only ones that are legally plotted and developed. So if you've got a blank piece of property that you're going to subdivide into six or more lots, absolutely you can do workforce housing. It's the existing ones that are developed. And the problem with those is that they were developed with existing infrastructure. They were developed with existing densities. And most of them don't have adequate room on their lots to fit additional units.
It just seems we're excluding a lot of property that's potentially eligible. So I'll drop that point at this time and go back to what I said in the beginning. Thank you for all your hard work. I'm ready to move this forward. It's going to be a living program. And there's no doubt that they will have changes, amendments and additions to it in the future. Back to you, David.
Thank you.
Can I find an annual fact on that?
You may.
Because the debate.
Yes.
And I'm not going to hit all the points on it. But every time you draw a line in terms of, so it's those people who live in residential neighborhoods with five or more, six and more, so a major subdivision that has been developed. And I think that's the key word. Their, their property, their expectations of where they're living in terms of what can be built next, well, and it's not a matter of the fact that there's workforce housing included in it. It's a matter of what can be built there and how much. So it's, it's okay to protect those people and that property with five or more, but it's not the rest. And, you know, the equity on that, you've jumped over a really, a, a, a big line on it. I don't mean you, I mean, the program has. And given the nature of the types of workforce housing, including manufactured homes in those areas, I think you're much better off to say legally plotted subdivisions, currently developed legally plotted, and leave it at that. If it's been developed, it's been developed. You know, if there's a lot or two that's left in there that someone may want to be or able to do something with, then they've changed the character of that neighborhood. They've changed people's life, quality of life, their property values and everything else. So if it's legally plotted subdivisions that have been developed, you're not going to have as big of an argument from me. And I'm not representing myself, I'm representing a lot of other people when I say that.
Jamie, I, I think there's, there's a lot of confusion because we don't have concrete examples in front of us. If, if, if a developer has subdivided a piece of ground for, for lots, so it's a minor subdivision, and has sold one of those lots so that somebody had expectations of what was going to happen in that subdivision, does this program even apply to the remaining three lots?
Technically, it's not developed at that point. So it's something that we would have to look into.
My, my point is that in order to take advantage of this program, you're doubling density on a piece of property that's already been subdivided. So I, I, I don't think we're talking about going back and subdividing it again, are we? Let's do my example, the subdivision, minor subdivision of four lots. And none of those lots have been sold at this point. They're all under the developer's control. Can that developer come to you and say, I'm going to subdivide again and take advantage of?
He would be eligible, yes.
Okay.
But it would trigger him to a major subdivision and he would have to comply with the major subdivision regulations.
But what if one lot had been sold to some other person? So there are three lots remaining.
We would have to, to look at that on a case by case basis to see if we could do something. Having not executed the program, it's, it's going to be a little difficult to know right, right away.
I think that, that's at the, the core of what Ms. Becker's talking about. What, what assurance does a property owner have when sold in a subdivision that is a minor subdivision? That's really, I see, Mr. Colon, Sean, do you have a comment that you wanted to make?
Yeah, if you'll indulge me for a minute. I know our discussion for that particular example, Mr. Chairman, had taken place. And our discussion led us to if, if a developer subdivided a piece of property, once there was a transfer of ownership of one lot, then they'd have to continue on with that subdivision as was permitted. What we talked about was if there was a sale of a lot or development of a home, unless you had the control of all of the lots in the subdivision and you came back in and replatted under the provisions of the workforce housing program, that those would not be eligible. And so that would eliminate the concern, I think, that you had voiced there. About one, one lot was, was sold or developed and then the sub, and then the developer comes back in and uses the remaining lots for the workforce housing program.
I think, I think another point that we, we're losing here is that the maximum number of units in that hypothetical subdivision for workforce housing is only 25%. So if you had that four lot subdivision and you doubled the density to eight, only two of those homes could be workforce housing. And they would have to comply with all the other codes of Hilton Head Island and Southern Building Code and so on and so forth. So I, I, I just think we have a tendency to look at this word workforce housing and imagine that we're talking about 100%. And we're, we're not. But I do recognize that when, when somebody buys a lot in a subdivision, there are certain expectations that should be protected by the town. And so I, you know, I, I think there's, there is an issue there. What happens if there are two pieces of ground of one acre each? And is there any protection beyond property lines? Probably not. If it's, if it's within the zone, it's probably not. Enough on that. Go ahead, Jamie.
I was, I would, you know, in these scenarios, and I think they're good ones. And David, you always have a much better picture and wording to explain that picture. But the assumption in that is that these lots are all single family. So when you talk about density, you're talking different types of numbers than if it was a different type of zone. And so that complicates the matter as well. So if you have, and I hear exactly what you're saying, Sean, and I understand the explanation. I, I, I still don't see how removing major doesn't solve the problem. You remove major and you keep it legally plotted subdivision that's been currently developed. So that allows those people, I guess, who have an undeveloped subdivision, as of yet undeveloped subdivision. I mean, replating things, you know, I've seen over the, the course of years in this town that that's really not a huge hurdle, right? So I don't see that as a real stumbling block. For me, what is, is the fact that we're distinguishing between properties and leaving some folks vulnerable in ways that the town should not be interfering with their land ownership and their land rights and their quality of life and our brand on the island. So that is a simple fix in my mind. I don't think how, I don't, you know, I understand that Jamie has said that it takes away a lot of the properties that this would be applicable to. I hear Glenn saying that we've taken away too many properties based on putting major in it. The distinguishing piece of that for me is you've said to some folks, you're not going to be in this position. And you've said to other folks, too bad you didn't have one more lot on your property. Because you too then could have had those same provisions for redevelopment.
I think the, the fact that you're making a point about minor and Glenn is making a point about major really is an example of how we as a council haven't come to grips with what kind of priority this really is and, and how we're going to implement it. But let me make my comments, if I may. Glenn, I have spoken to a developer on this and that developer is concerned about the 30-year covenant restriction, saying that that would probably mean that it wouldn't be a good investment. The developer would want to cash out earlier than 30 years. So that's probably an issue. I, I think that there are other things that really raise a question of whether or not this program is going to be utilized. The 25% component is supposed to offset what a developer in another place might get from the county, state and federal government. There's a subdivision of workforce housing being developed in Beaufort. 160 units, $31,000 per unit in subsidies by county, state and federal government. And in effect, what that does, it allows the developer to make a good deal for the developer and also keep rents where they are practical for the workforce. And so the question in my mind, is this 25% going to be enough for developers who want to participate in this program? From my personal standpoint, 25% only has us holding our own in workforce. For about every 100 new people who come to the island that are not workforce, we need another 20 who are. And so this, this issue of 25%, I don't think makes a significant change in, in, in our ability to satisfy our workforce needs. However, I, I do believe that it is. that it is important for us to make this first step in order to see whether or not it has a practical solution for our workforce. Let, let me, let me just make a couple of thoughts. I've heard and respect the concerns that I've, that have been voiced by people in Ward Three in the island generally. Those concerns usually relate to density, traffic, property values, drugs, security issues, bad behavior. I think those fears rest more on misconceptions about this program than actually what would happen because of the 25%. It's such a small percentage within the, the program or the project. And, and also our town codes require a certain kind of standard for the building and these units would be, um, homes would be a part of market rate housing. So a developer, a developer can't, in my opinion, dictate which of the units is going to be quote unquote workforce and which isn't. So I think the standard is going to be a market rate standard. So I, I, I hear those concerns and I respect them and, and they're, they're, there are, they are fears, I understand that. But I think that they can be dealt with. In, in my opinion, a community that has a viable workforce living within it is a healthier community and probably has higher property values than a community that doesn't. And then secondly, if you imagine this community without young people living in it, where does the leadership come from 10 years down the road? If, if you don't have younger people, young professionals, bank tellers, dentist, hygienist, I mean, if, if you don't have the full complement of workers in your community, where does the leader, leadership come from? Where, where does the energy grow out of? And, and so I think that this issue of workforce housing shouldn't just be a benefit, it shouldn't be perceived as just a benefit to businesses. It's a benefit to all of us. It makes us, it makes Hilton Head a better place to live. And it creates an environment for young people to become a part of the community and grow into positions of responsibility down the line. So I think this is a absolutely necessity for this town to deal with. The comprehensive plan says that there are 23,500 jobs on the island. 60% of those, 14,500, travel onto this island every day. We as an island can do better showing our appreciation of those workers. They deserve our attention. I think our economy and our well-being as a community depends on those people. And I think that to have our our memories of places that had housing projects that we don't, didn't like, to have our concerns about density regarding this program hold us back I think is, is short sighted. I don't think we as a community can sustain our way of life or the prosperity of our economy without making a major commitment to workforce housing. What is being proposed today is not a giant step. It's a small step. If young professionals and service person, personnel, personnel can't live on the island and become a part of it, where will the island's leadership come in 10 years? I think that is a very significant issue. I think one thing that people should keep in mind is we're not just talking about new buildings. We're talking about the incentives in this program to encourage people to repurpose those old tired commercial buildings as well. And I think that is something that people ought to applaud and say good. But I've heard, I've heard the comments from people who live on Gloucester and Valencia in Shipyard. I've heard comments from people who live down Bay Pines. I understand the concerns. But in, in my opinion, we have to take this step. It may not be perfect. I question whether or not it will really be utilized by developers, but I'm willing to try. I think it's probably less attractive for new development than it is for repurposing. So at the very least, I think we ought to pass this to encourage the repurposing of tired old commercial buildings.
David, can I, can I, um, can I push back on you just a little bit?
No.
And, and not because of any particular reason, because those who know me know that growing up, I grew up in a very poor family. The church brought our food and I lived in low income housing, the kind you don't want to live in. So the utopia idea, and I solely 100% as an educator, as someone who worked really hard to live in Hilton Head Island, understand that needs of teachers and firemen and bank tellers and all of those people that you're talking about. And I 100% support whatever incentives we can provide to providing a, a start to being able to create their dreams and fulfilling them. I get that 100%. When we're talking about doing that and we're talking about what you have, which I agree, and I've seen the developments and I know that they can be very Hilton Head like, right? They can be built to all of our standards and all of what we expect to see. But when you start then, you cross the, the threshold into, but we're including mobile homes. You've changed that dynamic. You start to go from the description that you just eloquently put forth to the other side of what there is no protections for in terms of this program and our community. And yes, we need everyone on the island. But we also need to keep the standards of development and expectations. You know, there are only, there are, there are only two people on this council who live outside the gates. And so while yes, it's very nice to be able to say that the PUDs can redo their master plans and all of them. They can apply to be a part of this. I wonder how long it'll take for one to do that. Right? And while there are other areas in, in, on the island that have been developed outside of the gates with covenants, there are other properties that are vulnerable to having influx of the type of development that they never could have imagined. And so what is the stop mechanism for, on this to prevent their? And it's not a NIMBY situation. It's a fact that while this is a good start, it has some problems, it has some places to grow. I think we're listening to and hearing from people that say, once again, don't do something just to get something done. Get it right before you impact people's lives. And so it's not just the big builders coming in and building pretty homes. There are other properties where the idea is different. And I, I don't know the answer to this question, maybe Jamie, you do. If someone was going to create workforce housing and there's a variety of different calculations in terms of size and they have to be marked the same as market rate and all, is there anything to prove? I think I do recall the conversation, but just, just confirm it for me. Is there anything that says you can't put in all of the smallest sizes? Or you, that are available to you, or you can't put in all of the larger three bedroom size? I, I realize that would be a, a development choice in terms of how it makes sense to the developer too. But curious, i- i- is there anything in there? There's a lot that isn't in here. How many people can live? And I granted, I don't know that answer, how many people can live in, in an apartment comfortably? We grew up in, you know, a very, very small one bedroom with five people. You know, that's not, that's not conducive to healthy living. So these are real questions with real impacts that are on the other side of the utopia.
Thank you. Let me, let me, let me move this on. We've made a lot of comments that I think need addressing. I think that if staff can look at the things that we have addressed today and be prepared to come back to full council, I would like to have a motion to move this forward to council.
I move that we move that, that we raise the program, the workforce housing program on for consideration by the full council.
Is there a second? I will second that motion. Teresa, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Becker?
No, we are not there yet.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes. Thank you. We would like to move on to the review and recommendations of the sea turtle protection ordinance revisions. Anne, would you like to make a res- presentation for us, please?
Yes, good morning. For the record, Anne Siren, Senior Planner with the town. The staff's recommendation is that the Public Planning Committee forward the proposed revisions to the sea turtle protection ordinance to town council with a recommendation of approval. And there may be some additions that you would want to make as well. I'd like to give you some background information since it has been a while since we discussed this. This was last brought up at your February 27th meeting. You discussed and heard comments from the public on the proposed changes to the ordinance. And that included whether the ordinance should apply to existing structures using sea turtle friendly light bulbs and whether replacing one non-conforming window in an existing structure required replacing all of them. At the end of the discussion, you voted 310 to forward the proposed revisions to town council with a recommendation of approval. And, and in April, staff requested that the mayor postpone scheduling the town council review of the ordinance to allow time to discuss new deadlines for compliance and concerns regarding requirements for existing development. And staff has made a few changes to the proposed ordinance, which I'd like to review with you. Teresa, if we could open up the PowerPoint? Thank you. Thank you. All, almost all of the dates for compliance were originally May 1st, 2020. We changed all of those, I'm sorry, that this, the slide is incorrect. We changed all of the dates to May 1st, 2021, so next May. Next slide. In section 85113, which has to do with standards for new development and remodeling of existing development, we did add three words, new and replacement windows and glass before windows and glass doors in section F. And can you forward to the next slide? And we added that to clarify that the installation of one new or replacement window doesn't require the replacement of all of the non-conforming windows and glass doors in that structure. Just to be very clear about that. So hopefully that should clarify that point. In standards for existing development, section F, we changed the word not to less just to clarify that we don't expect that there will be no light visible from the beach between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM during sea turtle nesting season, just that light is less visible. Next slide. So hopefully that should clarify that even if some ambient light is visible, you know, behind cloud or behind curtains or blinds, that that is still in compliance with the ordinance. And next slide. We also added a section to deal with second story windows. So there are some beachfront homes with windows that extend beyond one floor. And what we want to make sure is that the ordinance doesn't require people to try to install either very tall curtains or curtains on second story windows where in a, a non-beachfront house, you wouldn't normally put a curtain there. And so I think next slide. So hopefully that addition will clarify that if you have very tall windows on an existing structure, you don't have to meet the requirements to cover them with blinds, tint the windows or use solar screens or even turn off the lights if you use sea turtle friendly light bulbs in the fixtures. Okay. And there was, so those were the, uh, those were the changes that were included and described in the memo. And then I wanted to mention one additional possible change for your consideration. In, in regards to the sea turtle nests that are laid north of the jetty, which is approximately, uh, uh, the jetty is like beach marker 121 is the start of the jetty. Just for reference, the Port Royal Beach Club is approximately beach marker 123. So just to give you an idea, it's in the Port Royal area. The Sea Turtle Patrol relocates all of the nests that are north of the jetty. So starting in the jetty, moving through Port Royal Plantation. Because the, that area has been deemed unstable and counterproductive for sea turtle nests. So nests that are laid in that area are dug up and relocated south of that 120 beach marker. So for your consideration to further clarify and to further target the requirements, you may consider advising staff to forward the ordinance with a recommendation of approval with the recommendation that the proposed changes to the ordinance wouldn't apply to structures that are north of that beach marker 120. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have or clarify that point.
Well, thank you, Anne, I appreciate that. Do you have comments, questions for Anne? Go ahead. You're, you're muted.
I have some questions. Anne, could you go back to the last slide that you showed, the new language dealing with the higher windows and?
The one that's all red.
Existing structures.
Yes, sir. Give us just a second, we'll pull it up.
Okay.
There we are.
Windows located on the first story that extend into the second story or above. Does that mean with or without a break in there?
Yes, sir.
Typical thing you would have, I don't, you wouldn't call that a sill, but the frame around the window. And then there could be another window above that that appears to be the same, but it's separated by a division.
Yes, sir. The intention of that provision is to include windows that are The intention of that provision is to include windows that are either a single pane of glass moving from the first to the second floor, or windows that are on the second floor that are their own pane of glass, but appear to be architecturally, like as you said, may have some break or some frame, but are still part of that floor.
We may want to do some clarification on that. I don't have the ability to write that up right now because I'm off at a remote location, but whether continuous with or with architectural breaks, I guess that answers my question there. If all interior light fixtures visible from the beach use only long wavelength, 560 nanometers or greater, light bulbs, does that mean that if you have a standard, let's say 100-watt light bulb on the first floor, in the living room on the first floor, and there are appropriate draperies or tinting of that first floor window, that that light, because it was ambient light visible from the beach, that light would be a violation? Is that what that means?
No, sir. I believe, I believe I understand what you're asking, is that if ambient light is visible...
Didn't say it very well, so thank you.
If I can restate what I think you said, you're asking if any ambient light is visible, does it all have to be sea turtle-friendly light? Is that correct? Is that what you're asking?
That's a good way to put it, yes.
Okay. That's not what the ordinance states, and that's not our intention. The exception was only that if you don't have any, if you have those tall windows in a structure and you don't want to use drapes or curtains or turn off your lights, that an alternative to that would be using the sea turtle-friendly bulbs. That would be the, it was very specific to the case where you didn't want to use any kind of tinting or curtains or turn off your lights.
To clarify that, does that mean that the light from theoretical 100-watt bulb would not be a violation unless the fixture itself was visible from the beach? In other words, if you had a chandelier, for example, that was high enough to be seen from the beach, then that fixture would have to have the approved light bulbs?
Yes, sir, that's the intention.
My major objection to all of this has been a requirement of a retrofit of an existing house. I'm wondering, and we're slicing and dicing here, which lawyers are accused to do endlessly, and I plead guilty in my past of doing that, but I wonder, couldn't we make this much more simply by saying that existing structures, the structure itself, the house itself, will be exempt from this ordinance until there was a major redevelopment or replacement of all the glass? Why do we have to go inside the house? I understand spotlights, that is fixtures that are outside, and light fixtures that are guiding people around in the darkness, but why can't we just simply exempt existing structures until an event occurs that requires compliance with this ordinance?
Our intention is that the, our intention was to bring houses in, or I guess windows into compliance as they're replaced in a structure, and to avoid the idea of a developer perhaps trying to get by regulations by replacing windows, let's say 25% at a time. If they're redeveloping a house, if, let's say, there was a house where they wanted to completely regot to the interior or replace all of the windows, so it would be considered an existing structure that's being redeveloped, you could get around the rules by, let's say, replacing, you know, pulling a building permit to replace 25% of the windows at a time, then another 25%, and so on and so forth. So that was the intention of requiring each replacement window as it comes in to be compliant with the regulations, but that's, you know, certainly you can make a change to that.
Yeah, to me, it makes things much more clear by simply exempting existing homes from this ordinance and providing that they would continue to be governed by the ordinance that is currently in effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Becker?
So I think that the changes are good. I think that they do a lot to lessen the burden on oceanfront property. I do agree with Glenn to the extent that I don't like at all the idea that we're reaching into someone's home and dictating. I understand the purpose of it is that the light from the home that spills out into the public arena is, I guess, fair game. I'm assuming, and I believe that I've been told, that Amber and the turtle trackers have been involved in all of these changes as they've been discussed and put into the ordinance, and that we have their expertise and valued concern as residents and active and engaged environmentalists on the island, and that's important, in that they've checked off on this. So that's really what I have to say about that. I do have to comment strongly about the idea of reaching into someone's homes. I don't have a problem with really much else of it. So that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. I will make a couple of brief statements before Amber Coon's going to call in. I'm reminded of 1957 when Charles Fraser envisioned the Seapines development. In his mind, there were certain things that he really wanted to do, i.e., have houses be subservient to nature, color, nature blending colors. And so he created covenants and restrictions to protect the vision that he wanted to have In 1983, the town was incorporated, and it created ordinances and policies to protect the vision that the community had at that point and wanted to have preserved. A big part of Charles's vision, a big part of our community's reputation and brand, is our environmental stewardship. And that isn't narrowly defined. It just doesn't have to do with trees. It has to do with flora and fauna, how the ecosystem works, how we are here on earth to live within that ecosystem and do our responsibility to protect it and to have it be sustainable. And so I have to look at this ordinance in that context. It's protecting our brand, it's protecting our environment, it's talking about who we are as a people on this island. It has to do with our character, our civic pride. And so when somebody says, "I don't want to turn off my light at 10 o'clock," I have to say, "Okay, I understand the inconvenience, but, you know, maybe, maybe we ought to be protecting the community interest as well." I'm sorry, I just, I think, I think there are times when we as individuals lose sight of what makes Hilton Head special, in that we all have to play our little part or our big part to make that work out for future generations. And so I don't think this is a perfect ordinance, and I understand the inconvenience at one level and the expense at another level. But boy, I think about the buffers, the setbacks, the impervious cover, the height restrictions, the tree ordinances. All of those were put in place because the community wanted to protect the environment. And I think it's really important for us as leaders of the community and the Chamber of Commerce and the newspaper to continually remind us of how all of these things fit together. And even this one little ordinance plays an important role in how the rest of the world perceives us. So I think it's important for us to pass this ordinance. And I'd like to say that in many ways, it is the passion of the turtle trackers and Amber Coon who have persisted to get us to the point where we can do this. I also believe that it isn't just the ordinance, it's our attitude on council towards enforcement and education. Because over the years, the fact that we don't have a continuous reminder of what makes us different in terms of our environmental stewardship and the responsibilities to it, I think we lose track of that. So those are my comments. Now we'll have a public comment, limited to three minutes. Amber Coon, are you on?
I am. Hi, everyone. This is Amber Coon, for the record, Sea Turtle Patrol manager. And my comment, I just want to give you guys an update on the nesting season. We had, we ended up with 278 nests on our beach, and our beach is 14 miles long. A beach to the north of us that's eight and a half miles long had 1,123 nests on it. And the reason that there's such a big discrepancy is because that island is a refuge with no development. So I know that people think that because our nesting is increasing, that we are above the board, but I will tell you that anywhere with development, this is not going to have as many. It even shows up in Kewa, where they have development, but not as much as we do, with 345 nests in a smaller beach compared to our 278 nests. So far, we have had 34 misorientation disorientations, which means that hatchlings went the wrong way. The most we've ever had is 38. So we still have 100 nests on the beach, so we'll have more, we'll probably break a record there this year. I saw this letter that came from the opposition recently, like an hour before this started. And I will say that their references to increased nesting density is something that is true, but that's not what we're talking about here. We're not talking about nests, we're talking about hatchlings and where they go. So it has nothing to do with how many nests we have. I will say that it sounds like they didn't read the current draft with the changes that I think are very accommodating. They state that it's unscientific, but there's a technical report that was issued by Florida Fish and Wildlife by the most well-known sea turtle biologist in the country. And it was sent out in 2003, where our ordinance is from 1990. The verbiage, "light illuminating the beach," is ridiculous. If you have light illuminating the beach, you literally have a spotlight pointed at the sand. So in that technical report, throughout the entire report, it says light visible from the beach. And I think it's interesting that Google searches are the source, because you have to know about how sea turtles' eyes function, their cone of acceptance, their eyes on their head would be five times larger than the ones on your head, and how they work. The self-scientific things that, you know, that wasn't taken into account. And when I got to the Nazi blackout thing, I just had to stop reading. Like Mr. Ames said, you know, it might be an inconvenience for you to change your lightbulb, but is it worth the $15 lightbulb versus 120 hatchlings going into the den the wrong way? And I'll buy the lightbulb. So as far as like taking of income, taking of income, it's not.
Amber, you better wrap it up, your three minutes are coming to a close.
Okay, welfare of general public, you know, was mentioned, and it just, I don't think that this really applies to welfare of the general public. I think if you ask the general public, they probably want this area to comply with a bulb change. Do you have any questions for me?
Nope, not at this time. I appreciate your taking the time to call in, though.
Okay, thank you.
And do committee members have any further questions or comments before we have a motion?
I do, David.
Thank you, Glenn.
We have, we have a turtle protection ordinance. I support the turtle protection ordinance that we have. What I am concerned about and what I'm opposed to is requiring retrofit-type actions to existing structures. I'm not even sure that's legal, but we won't go there yet. We are protecting our turtles through the existing ordinance, and this intrusion into someone's home is what I'm opposed to at this point. But I do support turtle protection, and the existing ordinance gives a great deal of protection to those nests. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Becker? If I could interrupt you for a second?
You may.
Oh, thank you, sir. I just wanted to make sure to note, and I apologize for not bringing this up earlier, you did receive a copy of all of the public comments that we received via Open Town Hall and via email up until noon yesterday. I received two additional emails since then, which I'll forward to the public planning committee, and all of the comments will be made part of the public record. For your benefit and for the benefit of the audience today, I just wanted to note a couple, the general consensus of, or the general comments that were made. There was a concern written in the five-page letter about the idea of visible light versus light illuminating the beach and the concern about takings. There was, there were several comments in Open Town Hall about the need for enforcement of the ordinance. Several of the comments were generally opposed to the changes to the ordinance. Several mentioned that there would be too many costs to the changes with no benefits. The Hilton Head Home Builders Association and the Hilton Head Area Realtors did submit written comments, and generally, one of the main points was that the changes to the ordinance should not apply to existing structures. But just to note again, that all of those emails and comments are available as part of the public record, and if anyone in the audience would like a full copy of that, I'd be happy to send those. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Becker? Any further comments?
Well, so just, the answer to your question is no. But I do, I do have a question. The answer to your question with regard to this and my feelings about our requirement to society, I'm not going to, to be caretakers and to do what we can to protect not only ourselves, each other, but our environment and those that are lesser than us, I just think that's, this serves that purpose. The question I have for Ann is that, so really, from what I'm gathering, the way it's rewritten, there is no requirement to make any changes with regard to windows or covering, et cetera. It is, if you were to replace a door, a window, et cetera, it has to meet these guidelines, not that dissimilar. Not that dissimilar than if you were to replace a door or a window that you would be required to have a hurricane-proof type window, a door, or a covering for it, correct? I mean, this is an unusual, we put, we put expectations on how, what our new standards are when people do these, any type of modeling, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just two, two comments again, enforcement and education. I think it would be useful, Ann, if staff would provide, Public Planning Committee or Council, what it, what it might suggest to enhance the enforcement of these policies. I'm, I'm not asking for an extensive plan, but just some ideas at this time for the council's consideration. And then secondly, on education, I think Turtle Trackers is doing a pretty good job. I think the town has done a pretty good job of putting up signage and reminding. I think we do have to be continually vigilant with rental management companies and the like to see if they are participating in the program. And one idea a constituent offered was, you know, maybe, maybe an Eagle Scout project next year could help out. So I, I just think, I think the engagement of the community is pivotal. Because it's, it's, it's education for us and it's education for the people who are visiting the island. So with that, is there a motion to approve the ordinance as written and send it on to Town Council?
David, I'll make that motion as you stated it, yes.
Right, thank you. Is there a second? I will make that motion, I will second that motion. And Teresa, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
No.
Mr. Ames?
Yes. Thank you, Ann, very much for your time, patience, and work on this.
Thank you, sir.
There is no new business, however, there is, there are two items, staff report. Is Mr. Gruber on the call?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I am here.
Good.
Welcome. Thank you for having me. Let me go ahead and give the committee and the public an update on where we're at with the parking consultant project that we've been working on for several months now. The town entered into a contract with Walker Consultants. That is a firm that has significant expertise and, and background in conducting parking studies in all types and locations, but primarily had an extensive history in conducting parking studies for beachfront communities and barrier island communities. So for us, that was very attractive because they've looked at a number of other jurisdictions that are seeing some of the same issues and challenges that we are. And they've had an opportunity to both work through those and prepare a number of different and alternative resolutions about how we need to go ahead and address parking concerns. So what we tasked them with was providing basically three separate deliverables. The first was a public engagement and educational gathering task. And so they did that initially by meeting with various stakeholder groups from across areas of the town. They met individually and in small groups with members of Town Council, Town Staff. And at one point, we solicited general public comment from all of the island residents and we received over 860 written responses to that call for comments. And so all of that information, as well as surveys with regards to our parking inventory, parking usage, has all kind of been co-related together. And then that is going to then be used as the foundation for Phase Two, which is the phase that they're currently involved in, which is preparing a comprehensive parking plan with regards to the majority of town parks and beach areas. So where they're at now is they're working on finalizing those recommendations. The plan will be for them to re-engage the various stakeholder groups that they initially met with to roll out this proposed plan. That way, if there are issues or concerns that arise, there's an opportunity to address them before they're finalized and then ultimately presented to Town Council. And then the third deliverable that they're working on now and will ultimately be completing by the time it's presented to Town Council is an analysis on the feasibility of structured parking in the Caligny Beach area, particularly in the, in the parking area that we have now, and what that could look like, both from a size and orientation standpoint, the number of stories, the number of parking spaces. At one point, there was discussions about potentially making it a mixed-use site with both retail and possible residential uses to be included within that parking structure. So they are working on that now and developing some options that Town Council can ultimately look at with regards to that particular type of a infrastructure in that area. So it's an ongoing project. We expect to see public re-engagement sometime here within the next 30 to 60 days. Part of the concern that they have is they would love to be able to meet with people in person or in small groups here in the town. But unfortunately, because of the ongoing COVID crisis, it appears that at least a number of those meetings are going to have to continue to be held virtually. But they are trying to play that by ear so that if by some chance the situation does change sufficiently enough by the time that they get to that point, I know it would be their preference to try to meet with people in person if at all possible.
Good, thank you. Any questions or comments, Glenn?
Yes, I do. Josh, we're winding, near to winding down the heavy tourist season. I hope and frankly pray that we can have some aspect of this program in place by next year's tourist season. So that, what I'm saying here is let's look at the calendar and lay out some markers so that we can have something available and time to implement it for next year's season. Thank you.
Absolutely. And Glenn, I can tell you that I, I am very confident that this will be presented to Town Council well before the end of the calendar year, which will give us ample time to discuss it and any kind of adoptions that need to take place prior to the start of the next busy season.
Becker?
Um, actually, I don't have any questions. I'm good.
Really?
I know, I know. I surprised myself, too. It's like, who's got stuff and roving around?
We'll take it. I do, I do have some comments and I'm not sure they're in the form of a question. But I think the community has seen behavior at the beach and beach areas this year that's been very disturbing to them, trash, behavior, drinking. It's, it's just been an eye-opening experience of what could happen if we don't manage our beach assets. And so when you mentioned parking structure at Caligny, I think that's increasing the density of the population in an area that is already suffering from too much traffic and behaviors that we are going to have to manage more effectively in the future than we did this year. So I, I think that part of this study is a beach management plan that distributes beachgoers in an even way so that we aren't over, overcapacity at any one place. But how do you do that? I'm of the opinion that the growth of off-island areas is far outpacing our ability to accommodate day trippers wanting to go to the beach. And to say that the beach is 14 miles long and can take any number of people, I think is misguided. So it's a matter of how many people can we accommodate? And how, how are we going to afford the services, the security, and the other things? The, the road repairs and so on and so forth, the enforcement officials. And I believe that a parking fee is a very much a part of that final solution. So I guess my, my thought is, Josh, that I hope the final report is fairly comprehensive and recognizes a community value in it about how many people do we want crammed on a beach at any one time?
Sure.
So it's, it's the distribution of people. It's the management of the people when they're there slash enforcement. And then it's how do you pay for all the stuff that has to come along with them? Is that going to be a part of the report?
It is. Again, they haven't finalized all of the recommendations, but I can tell you that what the recommendations look like are going to call for paid parking at most, if not all, of the town's beach parks. Now, that doesn't necessarily apply to all of the town parks, but of all the beach park areas, that is going to be a recommendation. They've also included some information on there to show that the dollar figures that they're proposing to charge, there's a market analysis about where that places us in terms of other beachfront communities. I'm not sure how much you pay attention to the news from other areas outside of Hilton Head, but Isle of Palms, which again is a similar community to ours in terms of being a barrier island with a beach, they just recently voted to make all of their parking paid parking. There is no longer free parking for beach access. I think that's very similar to what you're going to see come forward with this consultant's report. There's also then going to be a business plan attached with that that says if Town Council adopts the parking rates that are proposed based upon the historical usage that we've seen and the forecast usage, you could see what that revenue would generate and then what we could use that revenue for in terms of providing the enforcement services, additional things like technology enhancements, wayfinding opportunities, things like that, which will help to ensure that if there are areas that you go to, say, you know, one beach park is filled by use of those wayfinding signs, similar to what you do if you go to a parking garage, you know that floor four is already full, so you don't even try to go there. You go to someplace else where you believe there to be excess parking availability. So there is a number of things that are going to be in there, but it is definitely comprehensive in nature.
Yeah, I'm, I'm encouraged by what you said because I think what's important is a beach management plan and not strictly just a parking plan.
It's certainly going to be parking-centric.
Okay, well, I, I guess I would then make a final comment. At some point, I think the town is going to need a beach management plan because its prime asset beyond the natural environment is the beach. And we need to figure out a way to manage that in a compatible way with island values. Thank you.
And I would just, I would just add to that, that was the way the conversation went. I would just add to that, that I'm hopeful that this plan, when we receive it, isn't focused as an objective to find ways to increase the capacity of day trippers, but in fact, to enhance, to enhance the beaches for our residents and for who we can accommodate at a reasonable level.
Yeah, there is certainly no goal here of trying to increase capacity. That's partly why the first phase was to examine our existing inventory. But the reason why an option would be brought forward to discuss the potential of structured parking in the Caligny area is the realization that as it exists today, we are already seeing an overutilization of that area. And then that ends up spilling out into the surrounding areas, causing those secondary problems. And so the usage as it stands now, and, and you have to keep in mind, this is prior to the opening of the Celebrations Park, which again is going to be a driver of people coming to visit it. This is a response to seeing a perceived issue in terms of lack of availability of parking for the conditions as they exist now.
Thank you, Josh. Appreciate it. Oh, anything else? All right, thank you very much. Ann, do you have an update for us on the trolley service?
Yes, sir, I do. Unfortunately, due to COVID and quarantining, due to exposures to COVID, the Palmetto Breeze has shifted their drivers solely to their bus services. So currently, the trolley is not running. I believe we will receive an update shortly from Mary Lou on when they will resume the trolley service. And I can bring up some numbers for you so you can see where we were before they stopped service up until July 20th. If you look in, so this represents the daily totals of, just on this, from July 1st through the, the 20th. If you look under the daily total, the third column from the right, at the bottom, you see from the 1st to the 20th, there were almost 1,400 riders compared to fiscal year 2019 where there were 3,500 riders. And then at the bottom of the chart there, you can see the June numbers for this year were 654. And again, for the first 20 days in July, it was almost 1,400 riders. So we're at about 40% where we were last year. Obviously, I think the pandemic has, is playing the largest part in the reduced ridership. And I hope that we'll get some data from other services that provide a similar trolley and, and see if they experience similar reductions in ridership. I assume that that was the issue in, in the reduction of ridership. But you will note on the chart that we, we have implemented the, the free fare. So all of the fares are noted as free fare, but they did also count seniors and children just to get an idea of, of who is riding the trolley. But we're, we're hoping to resume services shortly and hoping that everyone is, is back to full health in, in a short amount of time.
Good, thank you. Any questions from Glenn or Pammy? All right, thank you very much, Ann. I'd like to move on to committee business and give Ms. Becker an opportunity to discuss something that she wanted to bring up.
So thank you for that. And I'm not sure, but I'm hopeful that you both received some, some photos and some information that had been shared with me. And I believe Teresa has it as well, so it can be brought up on a screen share when we're ready to do that. But what I wanted to say is it was brought to my attention by one of our Hilton Head Island residents that something that's missing on our island that's very particularly important to those who have limitations to getting to our beach, onto our beaches and enjoying the ocean as they may have other times in their life is, is pretty much non-existent. So what he's suggesting, and I am very, very enthusiastic about this idea, is that at Islanders Beach Park, he's identified, as you can see on this picture, an area where it can be a, a breakoff from the main walkway can be developed along the tree lines or wherever is necessary to fit within OCRM and all of those constraints, a pavilion. And that pavilion would accommodate wheelchairs and spaces for caretakers so that people who are limited can have the opportunity to enjoy our, our beaches, the sounds, the healing salt air, and just as everyone else here on the island does. And Islanders Beach Park is particularly well-suited for it. The walkway, the parking, the walkway going out to the beach, the deck is very, very large and accommodates the wheelchairs, but they need a place to pull off to the side. Apparently, this idea had come up in the past. And when it was addressed, he said it, it, it didn't quite meet what his expectations were because it was met with just one of the beach runners going down to the sand. And that's fine, but then once you get there, where, where do you go with your wheelchair? How do you, how do you have your time? And I find this to be something that's very worthwhile. I think it's in keeping with our draft of our new comprehensive plan. And I think I sent those documents to And I think I sent those documents to you. But on two, to page 247, under Parks and Recreation, our parks and recreation should be inclusive, equitable, and accessible. So by considering this idea and finding a way to move it forward quickly, we will have satisfied something that we right now is that, are saying as a community is important to us. On 249, it says that continually seeking ways to ensure the island's special needs residents and visitors have equitable access to town parks, events, and programs where feasibly possible. I think we can make this happen. And I think our residents will appreciate it, they'll use it, and I think it'll enhance their lives dramatically. On page 261, 4.3, identify opportunities for opening or improving new view sheds of water that are adjacent to public parks, gathering spaces, and pathways. And so I think this is an idea that's consistent with where we're heading with our new comp plan. I encourage any questions that you might have. And this gentleman who brought this to my attention is a caretaker and knows specifically, personally, how important this is to his family, but many others that, that he knows as well. And I'll tell you as a personal story, when my grandparents could no longer make it down onto the beaches, they would spend their time in the happiest place for them. And that would be on the park benches overlooking the ocean. And they would do it every day, listening to the water and watching the people and just really having a, a healing hour or two in their lives. So I, I see value all over this project. And I'm hopeful that we can discuss a way to move it forward and to get it done. One other thing, he did mention in terms of funding. If that becomes a question, and I say funding is always a question, right? That he believes that there, there are enough people that he knows and has spoken to this idea about, that a fundraising type of project could, could be, take place very easily, that would help take care of any concerns with regard to that. So that's what I wanted to present. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Glenn, do you have a questions or thoughts?
I just have a comment on this. This same citizen contacted me, and I support this project, this idea, very strongly. I think it's outstanding. I think it's helpful to see the other examples that he has shared with us. I know it's always helpful to the town to have a public-private type of project. I think that's really an exciting notion here. So I support it, we need to push it forward. Thank you.
I'm also enthusiastic about it. And Tammy, thank you for bringing it to our attention. And I hope you'll get back to the gentleman and say that you have two other accolades wanting to, wanting to help out.
Well, I absolutely will. What's our next step?
I think Public Planning endorses the project and sends it on to Steve Riley, the town manager, for his thoughts on how we can move it forward in a public-private collaborative effort.
Okay.
I have one, one, Glenn, you had some thoughts that you wanted to bring up before public planning? Is there anything at this time?
We're thinking about this, sir. Excuse me, yes. I think that public planning needs to hold a workshop. And the purpose of the workshop should be to discuss growth on the island and tools and techniques that might be used to manage that growth so that we don't outgrow our island and destroy the reasons we all came here. I think the idea of a workshop, we could draw together people with expertise, including folks like you, David, who can share ideas and techniques and that we need to consider. To me, that is at the core of what public planning should be about. So I suggest that as a future meeting of this committee. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. I have another hot button for myself, and that is how short-term rentals are impacting our traditional residential neighborhoods. It's sort of the disintegration of the social fabric within our communities. And I think as a long-term trend, it is a disaster for our community, broad speaking, our community. Big houses with 24 people living in them is inconsistent with a house next door that has a family of four. The parking impacts and so on and so forth. So I, I just think that what you're talking about, Glenn, and what I'm talking about are connected.
Agreed.
And the, the growth management issue is, is absolutely a concern of mine as well.
I would agree with both of you. This is a discussion that's long overdue, and I hope that that workshop can be scheduled sooner rather than later. These are important topics.
Thank you very much. If there is no other business coming before the committee, is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
I will accept a hand vote. All in favors signify by raising your right hand. We stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Bye-bye.